The city commission meeting, could we have the roll call, please?
Smith.
Here.
Clu.
Here.
Bragg.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Mayor Robish.
Present. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Moving on to the agenda approval, I would like to add 10.1 tonight under departmental items. We have our fire chief here with us tonight. Under 10.1 for firefighter equipment. And I think that's all I have for additions. Anything else from the commission?
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Clu.
Aye.
Bragg.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Mayor Robish.
Aye. The city commission adjourns to convene as a board of adjustments for the following public hearing. 3.1 is HMMI Incorporated LLC project address 640 Arizona Northwest is requesting to construct an addition with the connecting air handling system attached zero feet from the property line, where code requires a 15-foot setback from the west, which is the front property line in an area zone I-2 General Industrial District. And I'm going to turn this over to our city planner Barry Cranston, and he will explain this for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, horizontal machining, otherwise known as HMMI, is requesting a variance, as you can see from the overhead board up there. The proposed addition that was recently announced is the yellow line, and that that yellow outline would be constructed to the face of the building. And then the variance, however, in this case, would allow horizontal machining to build up to the property line as the air handling equipment, since it is considered an essential function of the building and therefore part of the infrastructure, it's treated in the property world as part of the building. So that's why we needed the variance to allow them to go up to the zero foot line.
The red line.
The red line. And so that that air handling equipment extends actually a little farther than that into the right-of-way, but that will be handled at a later date. It needs to go through the planning commission. They are going to request that the city consider vacating part of that, which would extend their ownership of that property into the right-of-way somewhat. And so, but that has to go through the planning commission and then to the city commission. So that will happen most likely in September. So that's a later date. But so tonight's vote is merely on the variance to allow them to go to a zero-foot build-out with that air handling system.
Okay. Okay.
For consideration, I would move to approve the variance for discussion.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, so now we'll have some discussion. I see we have Matt with us tonight, and I'm not sure.
Brandy.
Brandy, okay. Is there anything else you need to add to what Mr. Cranston's portrayed?
No, I guess just as far as the vacancy part, Barry said he's going to reach out to us on that there. But I appreciate you guys getting us in here as quick as you did and being this take care of. Because it's a pretty sensitive timeline. We have $7 million set in the parking lot right now waiting to get put into a home, so we're, you know, Barry's been very helpful with us, helping to get this project moving along. And like I said, we're very appreciative of that. I don't have any other questions right now.
Okay. And from the commission, anyone have any comments, questions, concerns, comments? There you go. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Since it's I-2, it requires a 15-foot setback. What requires or is allowed a zero? Is that just general business?
In a B-3, you can go to a zero-foot setback on the sides. But there is a front setback and a rear setback.
Okay.
And so there is a zero-foot setback. It just doesn't pertain in this particular question, because where they're trying to extend out from is how they're addressed for Arizona Avenue. So that became the front of their building, and that's why we determined it that way.
Okay. And then in the event that it's approved, this variance, would that also... What if the right-of-way abandonment is not approved, where would this...
That we've discussed that with them, and we've strongly encouraged them to have a Plan B ready, just in case. Now, that said, and I have not talked about this with Matt yet. The RPZ, the way it extends from the airport on a map that I have in my office, shows it coming from the northeast corner, kind of where my mouse is right here, and it slides through this building at a diagonal. And so therefore Matt couldn't add any height to the building. And so what we're exploring now, and I'm waiting on a call back from an engineer, and I was hoping he'd call today, and I have not heard back from him yet. I'm hoping that since this addition is outside of that RPZ zone, that the ratios might be different, and we might be able to go up with the building.
As planned.
As a possible alternative. But I won't know that until whenever I hear back from this engineer. And in fact, the mayor and I were just talking about it. I'll probably call him tomorrow. I just didn't hear from him today, as I'd hoped, but... So that's, we're still exploring some alternatives there to try and give the company its best shot to move forward regardless.
What does the zero-foot setback gain them if they're trying to get rid of some right-of-way? What does this gain if this is as far as it goes?
It would allow them, it would gain them about... It would gain them about seven feet.
Is that enough for the air handling system?
No, no.
Or what are we...
It's not. The pad for the air handler is approximately 21 feet deep. And that houses, it's about 30-plus feet in length. And so all this heavy industrial air conditioning equipment sits on that.
So without the right-of-way being vacated, is there a need for the zero-foot setback?
Yes, I believe there is, because that zero-foot setback, if you give them the additional footage in right-of-way that would be coming up, that allows them to go out to that zero-foot setback, and then we, that would create a minimal amount of right-of-way that would be needed if it is indeed vacated in the future sometime. So that zero setback, in my mind, is crucial for this variance.
I guess my question is, though, I kind of feel like we're putting the cart before the horse with this one, because we don't know on the other piece of it yet, how that looks.
Yeah, and I honestly, I disagree with that, because I felt strongly that we had to have this done first to allow them to move forward with the construction. And then, because they can possibly come up with an alternative for the location of that air handling system. Because it's not the building that would be in the right-of-way, just the air handlers.
And we talked about this earlier today, Barry, but the air handling system, it's not possible that that could go on the north.
At this time, until we get clarification from the airport engineers, my information from Matt, that they cannot go up with it because of the crane, the crane system that will be along that north wall. So that said, I'm still waiting to hear if there's an alternative to that. And then, you know, that Plan B is going to be important if, to explore ahead of time so that they can continue the progress. But I'm not telling them anything to go on that.
Well, yeah, and we can't cheat on the length, because a piece of equipment we're buying is like 126 feet long. So we do need that whole 140 feet, so we couldn't shorten that building up.
And you already have the equipment, right, Matt?
Yeah, it's here. It's in the parking lot.
Was that... Were the dimensions a surprise, or was that known before all this, I guess I should say?
Well, let's put it this way, the dimensions shouldn't have been a surprise. I've only been involved with this project about five weeks since we purchased the company. And it was, this had been ordered, so, you know. This is defeat. I've been tasked with to get a house from this piece of equipment out of the yard. So I, yeah.
Yeah, I get it.
And I understand exactly what you're saying, like, why didn't you think of this sooner? It's because I don't have a good answer for you.
I don't know if there's a good one.
But yeah, right, yeah.
Okay, no, that's fine.
As far as the traffic concern up in that area, Barry, at the end of Arizona on the north side, I believe it's Seventh Street.
Correct.
Seventh Street going east is not a developed road, is it not? I mean, it's actually blocked off because of the airport.
There is right-of-way there, but that has never been developed. No, that's correct.
But going west, that's developed, correct? Because it loops around.
There is a gravel road that loops around this building, but it's on private property. That road going west is basically semi-developed to allow for city vehicles to get in there. That used to be where the gravel pile was.
And then going north, that... I don't know as if that's even in city limits.
That quarter is not.
So really, what's affected from a road standpoint would be circling back to the west on Seventh Street.
That would be, and the only thing affecting, that is a 100-foot right-of-way. So it is a large right-of-way. And they, the way it sits, the road is not in the center of that right-of-way. There's a 33-foot right-of-way on the east half and 67 feet on the west. So it is, it is a little odd that it's like that, but we do have that in towns. Yep. So...
Well, it's a matter of getting it straight, you know. It's a look, I guess I'm just speaking from my opinion. Fairly low-travelled road, considering the circumstances that you're in, understand it. But I'm more inclined to be in approval of it because of the investment in the business community that HMMI is making. And obviously, it's probably not the way any of us want to go about it, but here we are.
Yeah, exactly. This is, you know, when you're playing poker, you don't always get the hand you want. Well, this is not the hand I want. This is what we're all kind of dealt right now. And I appreciate you guys looking at that and gals looking at all sides of this, I do. You know, this break is 7 million, the building's going to be two and a half. And then once that addition is done, and the break is installed up and operational, there probably will be a $3 million laser going in that addition to service that piece of equipment. So that, it would be, I would say, probably 20-plus employees that will be bringing on board once we get it all in to go on.
When do you anticipate it being done, an operation?
I would really like to have it running by the time that first of the year, because I've got customers out there that are very interested. There's only two like this in the U.S., this one and one other one down in Birmingham, Alabama. And it's that bent this long, and it's got very unique features about it, so we can bend some very specific items on it. And it's opening a lot of doors for us, you know.
That's all I have, Barry.
Mr. Mayor, if I could expand just on, I totally agree with what Barry's saying. The size of that right-of-way is abnormally large, and it's going to an area that, as highlighted by Barry, the difficulty of adding more buildings there because of the airport zone, that also would inhibit future development. You know, so I think the plan may have been at one point that it has this nice big right-of-way and the room to expand that industrial park further to the north. But the reality is, they would not be able to build anything with a sidewall height that would be needed for most types of manufacturing. So, you know, obviously, you can't say nothing would ever develop there, but it does really limit future development to that. So, you know, right now, we've got an abnormally large right-of-way and roadway going to an area that has a below-average possibility for future development. So I really agree with what Brian is saying. When you factor in the fact that there's not much going on in the north, and then you factor in the significant investment and impact that this will have on our community, I think it's really, really important that we do everything we can to support this venture.
Just one other note, was there any public comment?
No, there, we heard actually no comment on it at all. For sure, no opposition, but we honestly didn't hear anything from anybody.
So your property runs to the north, that fence to the north, correct?
Yep.
Okay, and so then this right-of-way in the city property?
Yeah.
On the north, on the east side?
Yep, that's correct.
On the east side, okay. Okay. Yeah, it's unfortunate. It's unfortunate how it, why we're here, I guess, but... It's probably, that industrial park is probably complete.
Yes.
Pretty much complete, except for south of them between, there's probably, there's an empty lot between, in there someplace.
Yeah. It's, yeah, there is an empty lot over there, but that, the here on industrial park is basically full now. There was some discussion about buying that quarter to the north, but because of the proximity to the airport right here, and when I was there, just, we just elected not to do it.
Didn't Felling Trailer buy that quarter to the north?
They did, they did. Not so much for anything manufacturing-wise, but simply to have extra space for storage.
Right, for parking trailers on.
Is what he told me. So, and just for the record, I want to make sure I share, you know, obviously Brett is here. He can comment on the engineering staff, but on behalf of Chris Newman, the building official, he recommended against granting the variance, just simply because he thinks it sets a dangerous precedent when it comes to right-of-ways, you know, city acquires, the cities acquire right-of-way one time typically, and so there's a reason why they don't give it away, because you can only give it away one time. And so that, and so he felt strongly that this is, this was something that should have been planned better. And he did not like the idea of any kind of easement or encroachment into that right-of-way. However, he was okay with the zero-foot setback on the variance. Brett, you can share your comments as well.
And really, that's all we're talking about tonight.
Tonight, yes, that's, but originally, in the original application, the reason I want to make that clear is because in the original application, there was that discussion about the easement in there, and I want to make sure that's clarified, is that it does not include that, that request for an easement anymore. It is strictly just the zero-foot setback for the variance.
Okay. Anybody else have anything, Brett? If you want to, you sure can.
I kind of echo Chris's concerns and follow kind of the same way as my comments are noted here. It's a very dangerous precedent getting into, especially the vacating right-of-way for public business, for private business, for private use. And so really would, yes, steer away from that, in my opinion. But the other thing is, I don't know that the other options have been fully vetted as far as air handling equipment. There are a lot of different options, and I haven't dug into it, and it's not my responsibility to dig into it, but there are a lot of different options that you can do with air handling equipment. You can actually put some of it on the exterior of the building in different formats, right? And insulate it and the ductwork, right? And as far as the height consideration, you know, until years back from the engineer on that, there's that option to be able to build the building higher, do different things there. A lot of times with the FAA, that's just another application too, right? So you can get it. The FAA can, you know, it's a process, but the FAA will approve, you know, different things. I mean, we do it all the time. We do water towers or just different tall structures, right? We look into that, and it's an application process that you have to go through. So I do feel that until those things are vetted, it's really hard to really look at this, so...
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just wanted, one, I wouldn't make this ask if we weren't standing where we are. You know, if we were in Arizona and we had a 12-month-long building season, I just wouldn't be an ask. But we're dealt a pretty finite timeline, and like I said, I'm coming in, I'm just five weeks into this thing, and I'm pulling out every stop I can to try to get a house for this piece, because it can't sit outside this one, and we got to get it under roof. And so I don't take this request lightly. I really don't. You know, the constraining factors we have are, is we go for every inch of height we can in a building. So all of our hoists are right against the roof, and so are as close as you can get into the roof. And we got equipment along the wall, so coming in through the walls, there's like that breaks 120 foot of the 140 foot we got, plus you got some ancillary equipment that goes around it. So coming in through the side, you're going to run right into the back of the braid. And you can't go through the side above the hoist because of the hook height would be too low on the side. So that's why we cheated it to the center of the middle, because that's where we got in the pitch of the roof. That's where we can do those big duct runs. And if, like I said, hindsight being 2020, I would have thought this through way better back in the day, but I just, like I said, my runway got really short. And that's, that's what I said, I wouldn't make an ask like this if it wasn't, you know.
Yeah. Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second on the table. If everybody's ready and okay. Rich, are you okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Clu.
Aye.
Bragg.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Mayor Robish.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Board of adjustment now adjourns to reconvene as the city commission. I would open it up for public forum. Is there anyone here for public forum tonight? Seeing none, hearing none, let's go on to the consent agenda. Matters appearing on the consent agenda are expected to be non-controversial and will be acted upon by the city commission at one time without discussion unless a member of the commission requests an opportunity to address any given item. Items removed from the consent agenda will be discussed at the beginning of the formal items. 6.1 tonight is minutes of July 14, 2025. 6.2 is fuel quotes for city departments. 6.3 personnel items. Number one, approve the voluntary retirement of Dennis Bennett, Assistant City Engineer effective September 26, 2025. And Dennis has served the city for over 22 years and deserves recognition for his dedication and commitment. And I do want to say Dennis has been here as long as I can remember and whatever, and he does, he's the assistant engineer, but he puts in a lot of time, and he does a lot of... Yes, thank you, Dennis. 6.4 special on-sale alcoholic beverage license applications submitted by Ben Drut. Number one, for the Woolsey-Wessington Golf Tournament on July 26 at Broadland Creek Golf Course. And number two, the Agtagor Golf Tournament on August 1 at Broadland Creek Golf Course. 6.5 consider raffle permit submitted by the South Dakota State Fair Rabbit Department on August 30th and 31st from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. each day. And 6.6 payment of the bills.
Motion, vote, please.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Clu.
Aye.
Bragg.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Robish.
Aye. Moving on to petitions and communications. Tonight we have a semi...
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I apologize. I'm in a bad spot for a call here. I'm going to need to drop off, but you could try to contact me for executive session. If I can't get in a better spot, I'll try and get ready. But if that's okay with you, I need to drop off for the rest of the regular meeting and possibly miss the exact, depending on my signal.
Sure thing. Thanks for coming.
Thanks.
Thanks, Rich.
All right. Tonight, under petitions and communications, we have Kim Kruger here with us at the Beetle, from the Beetle County Humane Society.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. So I'm updating for January to December 2024. We had 934 animal control calls in 2024. The first half for 2025 is at 420, so we're looking at roughly about half, so sticking around the same range. As normal, the big one is running at large. We had 355 of those calls were running at large calls, 72 neglect calls, 40 DOA calls, 30 biters. That's the number that I always want to get down. And we're already at 16 for June of, up till June of this year. So we really need people to be vigilant and make sure their animals are tied. We try to get into schools and like at Safety City, try to instruct these kids to be safe this summer. Parents out there, instruct your kids around strange dogs and stuff like that. We really, it really is a big, huge traumatic experience, not only for the victim, but the dog owner too. So we'd rather that number, of course, always be lower. We did 175 trapping calls in 2024. We handled 70 nuisance and wildlife calls, and then the remainder of that 934 would have been like vet trips, errands to pick up licenses, get paper, get gas, those types of things. So again, the total's 934. It is down a little bit. From 2023, we were at 100, or 1,092. So at least it's went down a little bit. I always like to see that. I think social media helps with that. People that are missing their animals could post them, and we can help on the social media side of things, which we try to keep an eye on. In 2024, we served 721 animals compared to 737 the year before. So again, sticking around the same amount, but 30 years ago when I started, we were taking in 12, 1,300. It's going to take a long time to see that, but that's good. I mean, it's dropping, so that's what we want. It's going to take years to catch up with that. Right now, our current population, we have 11 dogs, 53 cats in-house, and then we have 19 cats and kittens in foster care and three cottontails. So those 19 cats will be coming back, and then it just seems like pregnant ones are coming, right? We're just doing our best to keep on trucking. So anyway, 86 total, that's will, are up for adoption right now. In 2024, we adopted or rehomed 354 cats, 81 dogs, three guinea pigs, a rabbit, and a parakeet. We returned to owner 25 cats, 109 dogs, several wildlife. Several wildlife in our farm are released. Again, the DOA calls were, we had about 45. Euthanases, we pride ourselves because we have once again made the no-kill status, which means that we have euthanized less than 10% of our total intake of animals. Last year, we had to euthanize 34 cats and eight dogs. And I put these reasons, the euthanasia breakdowns on the side. I don't think I need to waste your time with all of them, but I think if the, if the residents of the city ever have a question, I believe in transparency. So if there is ever an issue on why are we euthanizing, it's all right here. It's, you know, either vet recommended or it's what's humane for the animal. Aggressive animals, insurance-wise and for the public safety, we don't put an aggressive animal out into the community. So simple as that on the aggression end of things. But some good things that are happening is due to a couple memorial donations that the shelter has received. We have some exciting things gonna be happening. We have a shelter gonna go up in our dog park that the city residents are welcome to use for a shade source. We have tried several times planting trees to no avail, so this will put some shade out there. So people love to hang out, they use it, and we want it to be a place where people can hang out, read a book, bring your lunch, what have you. So that's exciting. The next two are even more exciting, our catio, as we call it, so the cats can go in and outside. We have a doggy door, so like during these seasons, they can be inside, outside, day, night, doesn't matter. We are extending that, making it bigger and better for the cats. And then lastly, but not least, this one's the most important one to me, is the puppy play, dog playground. On the south side of the building, we're going to be fencing that off and making an area where the dogs that get along, there's, you know, all these 11 dogs would get along, they could be out in this fenced-in area with a pool. We're building a sandbox, equipment that kind of like that's out in the dog park. It will be half-roofed with shelter and there will be dog houses, so they don't want to be in the sun, they can be in the shade. Otherwise, they can play out there and hoping to do some fun water things out there so that they can be out and not in their kennels throughout the day. They can be out there as long as we're open and don't have to be kennelled. So I'm excited about that one. Just a couple things I want to remind the public about. We got fair coming up. Again, the animals are not allowed in the fairgrounds. Please don't bring them and leave them in the cars. I try to post notices on the gates for that and I will put it in the flyer that the Plainsman prints out with all the fair information, but we want to remind the residents, don't bring your car, your pets and leave them in the car. We have our four-pause, our annual four-pause pool party coming up August 9, so we want people to save the date from 6 to 7:00 PM. It's a hoot. If you don't have a dog to bring come watch, it's fun. And then lastly, September 27, we have our, this will be, I think, the third year we've done it, our vendor fair. We're kind of trying to go with a carnival theme this year. So if there's vendors out there that want to come, we're moving it back to Ravine Lake by putters and scoops because we did it at Memorial last year and we just didn't feel the visibility was, was good being down there. We hope to have pet parade, games, entertainment. So if you know somebody that strums on a guitar or knows some tricks, then we'd love you to set up a table. We'll be doing human slots. That was a hit at our bingo fundraiser, lots of fun. So yeah, that's kind of what we have going on. Any questions to me?
I have a question, Kim.
Yes.
The 355 dogs running at large, were most of those returned to their rightful owner or?
109 of them were.
Okay. And then, I'm sorry, what is DOA?
Deed on right.
I wondered. Ooh, okay. I was hoping that wasn't it.
I know, I know, I know, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Kim.
You betcha. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Keep going, keep it up. All right, next we have our first semi-annual update from our new executive director, Brianna Johnson, and there'll be many to come.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Brianna Johnson. I am the new president and CEO of the Huron Chamber. I've been with the Chamber for a year and a half, which is super fun, and we have a really great staff over there, so I'm excited to update you. I will be going over things that worked off for 2024 as well as where we are for the first half of the year. I wanted to thank the city for the support of the programs and events that we host with the Huron Chamber and Visitors Bureau. So to begin, last year, we held a strategic planning session with Dr. Bill Anderson, who helped facilitate Huron Rising. And we continue to redefine our action steps within my office based on our mission statement, which is to serve members, strengthening business and supporting visitors, enhancing the community. And this strategic plan goes from now until 2028. Some of the local communication efforts that we do is Chamber Chat on Facebook, which is every Tuesday. We send out the Huron Happenings calendar every Monday through email. We have various Facebook updates about the community and our businesses. We send the e-balance to our members. We have a Business of the Week on Saturday, which is visible on our marquee as well as Facebook. We do various shop logo campaigns. We just kicked off, we'll be going into our second month of our monthly newsletter, and then you will see some various videos or TikToks as, and then we also attend the HRMC New Hire Orientation as well as any other brief meetings that we are invited to. Working with Huron Rising 2.0, we partner with the Huron Community Foundation, the City of Huron, Greater Huron Development, as well as other volunteers throughout the community to continue to enhance our community and the different areas that we feel are important. Coming off of that with the Beautification Committee, with some additional support from the Huron Community Foundation, coupled with money that we have raised during our annual celebration both this year and last year, we were able to purchase two new sets of street banners. Currently, the orange and yellow Discover Huron is up, and we have another more general winter-themed banner that will go up later this year. We are still working on purchasing more banners to update the ones that we currently have for hunting season as well as the fair, just because we know we live in South Dakota and weather is interesting. So those do take a beating from time to time. For the Highway 37 construction project, we have assisted with the DOT and contractors setting up meetings with the business owners to try and enhance different communication efforts, to try to limit any miscommunication or understanding. And then we also try to continue to engage the public to encourage them to visit businesses, even if they have a unconventional route or one that they're not used to, if they have to take a few extra steps or something like that. We partner with Greater Huron, the State Fair, the city, as well as the Business Improvement District on the Placer AI platform, which is a analytics platform that provides statistics to show attendance of events, uses of our parks and recreational spaces, where visitors come from and where they might go to after they've been at a specific event. So some events that have recently happened, the Corinne Soccer Tournament had, over the weekend, had over 4,000 visits. They had 2,000 unique visitors that returned more than once. That is a little bit down from last year, just different teams and the number of people that they attract makes that vary. For Broadland Creek Golf Course, for the entire 2024 golf season, there was over 41,000 people who visited our golf course. That might be about 10,000 people that have visited more than, more than once. If you're on golf league, you're getting counted every week. So far for 2025, this is March through July 13, so last week, there have been a total of 22.7,000 people who have been to Broadland Creek Golf Course so far. So probably right about on track for the entire year, of course, weather permitting. For Splash Central, there was a total of 36,500 people who have visited in 2024. Again, that might be 13,000 unique visitors who have visited more than once throughout the summer. This does only count individuals who have a cell phone. So for those children who are under that amount, so that does kind of skew a little bit of those statistics just because it's only for people who carry a cell phone, no one less than that, so we can always add on a few. For 2025 so far this year, again, from opening day through last week, we've had 21,800 visitors to Splash Central. For the hunting season from October of 2024 through January of 2025, there was 125,000 people who were in our community, and that can vary based on other events that happen as well, but through different hotel stays, people coming from out of town just to eat dinner, they eat at a lodge or stay at a lodge, anything like that, over the course of that hunting period. Some of our chamber-related statistics, we have currently 425 members. That is a little bit of a decrease from 2024. 2024, there was 442. So again, that 4% decrease, which we are always constantly working at. For 2024, we had 25 ribbon cuttings, and so far this year, we have had nine. Chamber mixers, this year we're hosting eight. We do try to sometimes stay away from the summer months unless there is a really special occasion to host a chamber mixer just because of attendance numbers. And we want to make sure that that's still worth it for that business to host as well. For conventions and events, in 2024, we serviced 40 different events, which is up 43% from 2023. I do think that we have a little bit better of tracking of those events that we are assisting with throughout the community. If those are different conventions in the convention center or other events at other venues, we assist in various different ways from that. And so far for 2025, we have 21 of those. So I'd say it's about even from where we were at last year at this time. Some monetary numbers, looking at different gross receipts. For lodging, this is year-to-date, the first numbers I'll share are from this year and then compare from last year. So from January through May of 2025, our lodging is up compared to last year at this time. Overall, in 2024 though, the lodging was down about 18% compared to 2023. So that was a difference of about a million dollars in lodging spent in Huron from 2024 compared to 2023. For the gross eating receipts of when you spend money out in the restaurants, we're slightly down by about 22,000 compared to last year at this time through the month of January through May. But overall, last year, 2024, was a good year. We were up 5%, about $2 million in the difference of 2023 to 2024. For the drinking receipts year-to-date, again, January through May, we are up about 4% for right now, the first half of the year, although last year was comparatively down to 2023. Well, and I wrote down here 17%, which is about half a million in the drinking receipts from 2023 to 2024. The first and second penny sales tax, year-to-date, just from comparing this year to last year, currently we are up 6% for that. The hotel occupancy from January through May 2025 is at 35% occupancy. This is up from last year from January through 2024, which was only at 26% occupancy. One of those contributing factors would probably be the state B basketball tournament that we hosted and some of those other large-scale events that have happened so far, the beginning of this year. For marketing, so far in 2025, we've spent $151,000 in marketing to promote Huron. Some of those advertising areas are with the South Dakota Magazine, 605 Magazine, which are aimed at not only attracting visitors but new residents to our community. We advertise through our Travel South Dakota Regions, which are the Southeast South Dakota, Glacial Lakes and Prairies, as well as Missouri River Tourism. And so through these organizations, we advertise through their vacation guides. They have a Sportsman Guide through Southeast South Dakota. They actually have a location in the Omaha Mall, which provides different digital graphics as well as physical information that is specifically about Huron and what you can do when you come here. We have a destination marketing grant that we submitted a four-year plan through South Dakota Tourism in 2023, and we're on our third year of that. That ends in 2026, but this is an additional $30,000 each year that we have been able to split up between promoting the hunting in our area, Huron in general, as well as the decks. But that does end in 2026, so we'll have to find some other avenues to be able to spend more marketing dollars. Splash Central, I already touched on some of the different Placer AI reporting. Some more details about that is that our trade area is predominantly Huron in the immediate area, but it does stretch to Mitchell, Madison, Miller, Redfield, Watertown, Brookings, and a few farther out west guests. I noticed this year that we have a bigger growth trade area coming from like the Sioux Falls area, which is kind of exciting to see considering they have their own large waterpark. There were 750 out-of-state visitors so far this year through July 13. We do have an advertising budget of 25,000 that focuses on digital and social media marketing with some local radio trades. And as Kim mentioned, the Four Paws, Four Paws, pause, pool party is on August 9. And then the Summer Bash, which is an exciting event also at Splash Central, is on August 8. In June, we hosted the South Dakota Barbecue Championships, which is aligned with Wheel Jam. We do receive $20,000 from the Business Improvement District for marketing of that championships, coupled with Wheel Jam. And then we add in a little bit more, so we spend about 22,000 focusing on digital advertising, but we do participate in radio, TV, and print ads as well. This year, we also had a local photographer, Melvin Aviles, who took some marketing photos for us to use next year and beyond. Our Placer AI report showed about 14,000 visitors who visit more than once, so a total of about 24,000 people who visited the fairgrounds over that weekend. This does show a little bit of a dip in attendance from the, from the previous year, which we are working on with the Wheel Jam Committee to always increase that. New for the barbecue in 2024 was a kids' queue. This year, 2025, we had nine participants at age from 6 to 15. We do pay out 16,500 for different prize monies. We had 48 KCBS teams, which is up 15 teams from 2024. In 2025, we had 29 rib teams, 15 backyard barbecue teams, and nine chili teams. New this year, we were a soy, soy combine contest. So basically, we had an additional, additional sponsorship by South Dakota Soybean. This provided an additional $15,000 in prize money for those with high scores in pork and chicken. We also were then on television because they have an agricultural network that runs with the Tella Land Network, and so we were able to get some airtime with that. We had well over 500,000, or excuse me, that's a big number, sorry. 500, just 500 volunteer hours between our committee and those that helped out during that event, and we, I just wanted to take a moment to thank them because we really couldn't do that event without our volunteers. I only have two more sheets left, I promise. For Hunt Huron SD and Gharinak Nation Marketing, in 2025, our budget for that is 62,500. 30 of that coming from the bid board, 15 coming from that DMO grant I mentioned, and then $17,000 comes from my chamber budget. This marketing is a combination of digital, print, TV commercial, and TV shows with a various amount of partners that we use. We also have a partner who does different podcasts and things, so we're really trying to touch on all the different kinds of media to get people to want to come hunting in our community. We just recently merged the hunt-huronSD.com website with our regular Huron SD website. So if someone Google searches Hunt Huron SD, it just automatically takes them to the connecting page from our, from our regular Chamber website. It just allows us to stay up to date with technology, make that more user-friendly for those searching, and then as well make it easier for my team. and then as well make it easier for my team to update the website as needed. For the Ring Neck Festival that we host every year, twenty twenty five, the dates are November sixth through the eighth. In twenty twenty four, we hosted twenty six uh six man ring neck teams. Though three of those were completely new teams and we had six more than in twenty twenty three. The deadline to register for that is August twenty ninth of twenty twenty five. We do have six teams so far with one completely new team as well. During that weekend, we also host the Bird Dog Challenge, the registration for that is October fourth. We do different marketing um through our partners that we have our hunting marketing through to promote that specific event. Um, it does bring a large amount of people in during the hunting season, which I know is already busy. Um, but, but we keep them here specifically and they're hunting with um the volunteer lay donors that we get to work with and get to build that camaraderie camaraderie and then they come back at different times to use their other hunting license that they purchased for that event. We work with the Plainsmen and Creative Printing to design our Huron Community Guides, which we distribute over uh nine and a half thousand of those each year to the community, community as well as people who attend four events. Huron Connect is a group underneath the chamber that focuses on hosting monthly events like Soup Saturday, the Burger Battle with H C I C, um Beer Madness, and Food Truck Wednesdays. So far, we have had two of those this year, our next one is next Wednesday, July thirtieth. Um, and we get to partner with H R M C for that event when they're having a dunk take, so come out and dunk your friends. And then their next big event is on October fourth and that's Harvest Fest hosted at the South Dakota State Fairgrounds, which is a completely free and family friendly fall event. Some of the other committees or groups, programs underneath the chamber is Leadership Huron. This year, we had fifteen students. Um, we are continuing to adjust the format based on staffing and timing. Um, so we started this class in November and we ended on July fifteenth. Through that, this year, this class raised fourteen and a, I had a typo, fourteen and a half thousand dollars through sponsors and their pickleball tournament that was held back in May. Um, they did receive a grant from the Huron Community Foundation of four thousand dollars and their projects went to providing two new sets of soccer goals at Pepsi Fields, as well as one set at CrossFit Park. They were able to raise more funds, so their additional money will go towards projects of a new water fountain at the Washington Baseball Complex, as well as helping to create new dugouts on two of those fields there as well since they're getting a little bit outdated. Kids are a lot bigger these days, they're really tall, I didn't get that one sadly, but um just to improve those and improve the, the look of the fields as well. Um, education wise, we partner with a company called Better Culture for monthly info and tools that we send out to our chamber members that help to benefit um their employee culture, help to recruit and retain employees, as well as um at times we offer other educational seminars and things to benefit the business community. The Governmental Affairs Committee hosted three coffees and with the legislators and three luncheons to hear from the county, city, and school district. They also hold public forums for different elections for both city, state, and then school elections as well. The Parade of Lights Committee, uh the Parade of Lights is set for November twenty eighth. They're currently working on updating Penguin and Fireplace Lane, which are our Christmas lanes out of south of town, visible from the highway. Our egg committee hosted third grade farm tours, which is a tradition that is twenty six years strong, maybe even more for our Huron community that helps to benefit the two hundred and fifty plus third graders um between our different schools that we have in Huron. The Egg Banquet is set for December fifth. The entertainment for that is Noah Sony, he is a comedic illusionist. Um, he's very cool to watch, I've seen him in person, so I'm excited for him to come to Huron and you'll be able to have more details about that soon. Other than that, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time. I know that was a lot, I appreciate your listening ears.
That's a lot, but there's a lot going on.
Always.
Always.
Brianna, I want to thank you for hosting Chamber Chat out of Solid Waste Department next Wednesday. You'll all get to see Dale live and last week, the Chamber Chat. Yeah, yeah, and we have a star amongst us. And last week, um Brianna interviewed Rob for Water Conservation, you did a great job, that was really nice, thank you.
And we do have a city update section in our newsletter that um we get to partner with you guys as well to try to continue to spread the word to the Huron community in every way you know how, just so they can't say we didn't try to let them know, whatever we can do to help spread that that knowledge, I think is important.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to the City of Huron for your partnership and opportunity to share for about a year so far.
Okay. All right, moving on in the petitions and communications eight point three, consider annual trailer court license renewals. And um you have, in your package, you have a list of five. Pauline usually goes over these, so I'm gonna, are you doing this or I'll take the pressure off if that's all.
Uh, you can take the pressure off, I didn't know I was supposed to do that.
Um, we have five um trailer court license renewals listed here, so you have, and I don't know if that's, there might be one missing that I can think of, but there might be possibly more than that, but there's five that are on renewals. So, um.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, any questions?
Looks like they were approved by the building inspector and should be ready to go.
They were inspected.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Um, sorry, just one second here, um Smith.
You ready?
Yes, I'm ready.
Aye for me.
Um, Clue.
Aye.
Bragg, oh Bragg's not on, Harvey.
Aye.
Robish.
Hi, thank you. Eight point four, consider approval of memorandum of understanding between the City of Huron and the State of South Dakota for the use of container truck and tractor truck during the South Dakota State Fair and authorize Dale Fortin, the Solid Waste Superintendent, to sign. And these dates are August twenty fifth through September second. This is, Dale's here to explain this if I can, but the fair, we take uh our garbage trailer out to the fairgrounds each year and the.
Well, it's a, it's a collection truck.
Collection truck.
So years, years, we used to run around in the fairgrounds and help them.
Yes.
Then they got private hauler or collector.
Yep.
What we do now is we li- give them a truck. And actually, one of my guys works for the fairgrounds, they pay him and insure him and so if something happens on the fairground, it's their employee and this just makes it so that they'll have insurance on these vehicles that are there to do the collection inside. Everything else at the fairgrounds, we take care of for them and they pay for the tonnage coming home.
Great. Thank you.
We've been doing this for several years.
Several years.
Who to approve?
Second.
Any questions for Dale, comments, roll call, please.
Um, Smith.
Aye.
Clue.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Robish.
Aye, thank you. Moving on to departmental items under ten point one. We have with us tonight the Fire Chief John Miller and he's going to present uh some firefighter equipment. John, thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you for having me. Um, so uh this equipment is going to be something I'm requesting it for, um it's a matter, we just don't have it. It's something that I've identified as an area that we would um need to pursue. Um, it's swift water rescue um equipment, so um currently there's not a um appropriately equipped team and asset for swift water rescue. Um, we do have a dive team in Vito County and that's just kind of two different, two different things. Uh, so uh we have a, we have the appropriate boat we need for the, for this kind of thing, but what we don't have is the proper like equipment, which would be the BP that the um the members would wear. So um that's what we're requesting it for, um I'm requesting it now instead of, you know, trying to put it off for a couple reasons. One is we want to start it immediately, um it's just against something we're not prepared for. So we want to get the ball rolling right away, as well as um in South Dakota, we want to take advantage of the weather to start getting hold of stuff, getting our training going, things like that, so that we're not starting, you know, next spring if we, you know, we put it off until everything freezes. Um, so the, the equipment requesting is dry suits, which are just like a protective suit that each, each member would wear. Um, the proper P F D, which is your life jacket, um is a specialized one, um helmets, just the, the appropriate things with, um that would go with that. So um if there's any specific questions on um the difference in, say, the dive team, what they can perform versus what a swift water rescue team um would perform. I know that's, we do have that resource in the county, but it's not quite the same thing, so.
Can you elaborate?
Yeah, and if it's okay, um there's the Emergency Management Director's here tonight, if it's okay, if he elaborates for me. He has more, the more details on the, what the, what the um dive team resources, what they specifically have on hand versus, you know, what we're trying to do, if that's okay.
Sure.
So.
Could you tell us, John, what is the cost that you're looking at?
Um, so the total cost uh would be four thousand three hundred nineteen dollars and forty six cents. And that would be for all the BP that the, the members would need.
How many members would that be?
Um, so there'd be outfitting three members, which is what you would um typically assign a three man boat crew in swift water rescue. So and there, uh the other things, there are suits that are, they're, they kind of come in generic sizes, so they're going to be the size that based on who we have would fit the most people. Um, and they have a lifespan roughly ten years, depending on how well we take care of them and could go over that for sure, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, so on the county side, we have the Vito County Dive Team under Search and Rescue. Um, their sole focus is for below, you know, water grade rescue, so. What John's, or he's talking about is his, anything on the surface water that is hard to rescue, we do not do anything with that with Vito County Dive. So their sole mission and goal is to go find somebody underneath the surface of the water and that's all we're equipped to do. We have boats, yes, but our boats are equipped with sonar so that we can locate a victim underneath the water. So we don't, what he, John's talking about with doing with swift water is not what we're doing with diver rescue and that's all we're equipped and trained to do with what we have for our divers. So strictly dive over there is all we focused on and that's all we have plans to focus on for right now, so. Um, yeah, there's definitely a delineation between the two.
Sure.
And there's definitely a target hazard here right in the city as far as things that myself that I look at emergency management side. You've got the potential for, pretty good potential for surface water rescue needs right here in town, so.
So yours is more recovery and what's?
Yeah, I mean, we talk about the golden hour, so we can pull a victim from the water. They've had recoverable victims within an hour that have come from underneath the surface, but yes, majority of what we're doing is recovery.
And what you're talking about is rescue.
Like active rescue type things that would happen in a flooding situation, um things like that. And then um one of the key differences, the environment you work in is, you know, with, with a flood to come through, the, you're not going to go diving in the floodwater um with the currents and things like that until things settle down. But the active rescues, they need to take place before they can get in there to do recovery searches and things like that. Um, that's what we're trying to be prepared for, so.
Okay. Is there a, what's the training curve on?
Um, so the things that we would need to, to go over is um training, mostly boat operation type things like that. Um, but speaking with um the state already, there's not a specific um certification that the state recognizes in this, um but I myself have, um I'm an instructor certified with the state and as well as there's, um I've been through swift water rescue boat operator course, advanced boat operator course. So um it'd be some training that we would do in house and I would set that, set that standard out there of what we train to, yeah, so.
So you wouldn't, we wouldn't have to send a group to?
No, we would start, that's, we would, as soon as we can get the stuff, we can start training immediately in house, um you know, and, and right here in Huron. So we wouldn't be having to, to send anyone out anywhere.
Okay.
Sure, fishing course involved in that.
I mean, we could just keep the hooks away from the boat, that's all.
Right now, uh anybody else have anything, any questions?
Well, I do, do you have people on staff who would do this?
Yep, so uh as I've, as I've tried to identify some areas, I think we definitely need to start working on. Um, some of that's conversation with um who's on staff, who's one interested and who's, you know, maybe physically prepared for the water stuff that we would be doing. Um, so I have a, a list of people to start with first.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, do we have anybody on your staff that would, that's already on his staff?
Well, and I think what we're, John's looking at is mostly for his folks to do initially. Um, we have had conversations about what like combined, what this looks like in the future. Um, it's kind of a, not, not us, we wouldn't probably take on what's, what he wants to do with swift water, but a combination of, you know, when you put those two resources together, they make a better team, yeah, in that aspect. But um for initially, him having the availability of paid full time staff definitely beats us on the curve where we have to bring volunteers in from outside. And when you're talking swift water rescue, time is pretty important to be able to get there and do it quickly.
But you don't have anybody in your group that's already full time on his staff?
There you go.
No, okay.
The dive team are all volunteers, aren't they?
Yes, the dive team are volunteers, there are some of the volunteer on, volunteer firmament that are members of the Vito County Dive Team and none of the career staff. Well, I shouldn't say, there is one that he's kind of getting off.
I see, okay. Um, and just to fill in the commissioners, this was brought to the um capital asset committee. And I, right before the meeting, I only saw one response, I guess. So I don't know that we, I, I can't sit here and tell the commissioners that the, the capital asset committee approves or disapproves, right now I can't say that. Pauline is gone for an emergency today, so um I don't know where she's at for sure. And I've only seen one, I guess, so.
Yeah, I, I appreciate you bringing that up, Mark, it, it'd probably serve procedure better if, if you followed through with that, with the capital asset and then bring it back next week.
Yeah, and I think that's part of the, it had been submitted, but I know she got tied up too.
Yeah, yeah, so we will get after that a little more this next week. And I, I'm sorry to say that, but I'm just going to say it, I just haven't seen enough response yet, so.
Okay, any other questions?
Uh, yeah, are there any questions for David or John, either one? So, thank you both for bringing that up. All right, we're going to go into a work session and this work session is Solid Waste Department, uh new.